Okay, I'm going to reconvene the special meeting of the City Council. Was there any final action to report, Mr. City Attorney?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. No final action tonight.
Okay, we'll adjourn the special meeting and call to order the regular meeting of the Folsom City Council for Tuesday, July 13th, 2021. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council members Chalamchela-
Here.
Howell-
Here.
Rodriguez-
Here.
Aquino-
Here.
And Kozlowski.
Here. If everybody would please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, are there any agenda updates?
You have one update this evening. Item number 11 has amended information that has been provided to the council and is available to the public on the back table.
Okay. All right. Well, we start every meeting off with business from the floor. This is an opportunity to have any member of the public speak on topics that are not on the agenda. So if there's anybody that would like to bring something up, now's the time to come to the podium. Okay, well, then we'll move on to the consent calendar. Before we do that, just wanted to point out that we have decided to resume our normal places on the dais here, having been vaccinated and feeling comfortable that most of COVID is behind us. So please call first item.
Okay, so your next item is the consent calendar? And you have no request to pull items at this time?
I'd like to pull three, four, and five. Really quick questions that I did not get a chance to call staff over today. So these are questions for staff.
Are there any other requests to pull something for discussion?
I'll move one, two, six, and seven.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on items one, two, six, and seven.
Council members Chalamchela-
Yes.
Howell-
Yes.
Rodriguez-
Yes.
Aquino-
Yes.
And Kozlowski.
Yes.
So item-
First question is for Marcus on resolution 10662. Sorry, Marcus, I meant to call you about this earlier today and got tied up. So my question is, do we really have coal tar epoxy as a lining in that pipe?
Good evening, Mayor Kozlowski, Marcus Yasutaki, Environmental Water Resources Director, yes, Councilmember Howell. We did have to do repairs over Ramo Bridge probably a year and a half, two years ago. And we did notice when we got to the north side of Ramo Bridge and then further investigation on the south side, there were areas that did have coal tar lining inside a potable pipe, which is why we haven't put that pipe back into service and why we're rehabbing more of that pipe than we originally thought.
Okay, because A, that shouldn't have been in there in the first place. So, you know, that in and of itself is probably reason to replace that line. I was, I went back and read it twice. It's like, am I really? Okay, so you know why.
Yes.
Okay, so, and the, any kind of lining of that, we're just going to lose too much surface area?
I'm sorry, what was that?
We're just going to lose too much volume with any kind of lining?
Yes.
Okay.
We'd probably shrink it down to probably a 16-inch ID, and I believe it's 21 right now.
Okay, that should have been probably a larger diameter in the first place, and it should have been mortar-lined. I was shocked when I read coal tar. Okay, so-
We were shocked when we found it.
Okay, so then I will move resolution 10662.
I'll second.
Okay, please call the roll.
Councilmember Chalamchela-
Yes.
Howell-
Yes.
Rodriguez-
Yes.
Aquino-
Yes.
And Kozlowski.
Yes.
And then I have the same question of the City Attorney on four and five. This actually has nothing to do with the Fire Department. Steve, my question to you is, why do we have that waiver of bid? These are professional services. There is no reason to have, in fact, I'm just concerned that, because I've brought this question up, I don't know how many times in the last 23 years. These are professional services. We are not required to bid for them. In fact, we are precluded from bidding for professional services by state law. So I don't see the reason for having the waiver of bid attached to this. It's misleading to the public, thinking that we are putting these services out to bid when we do not put services out to bid for attorneys, for engineers, for CPAs, for medical, for any of those things that require professional licenses. So I would recommend in the future that we not even make a reference to that.
I would not, I do not disagree with you, Councilmember Howell. The only response I have to offer you, Mr. Mayor, and the members of the City Council is that this is a belt and suspenders approach by the fire chief, which is an upstanding director, and he has really no-
Fabulous.
Exactly. It is not in any way, shape, or form, any intent of trying to mislead the public.
Okay.
It's just he's trying to be more cautious.
Okay, but if anything, I think that it does, because then there are people that think, oh, wait a minute, that's supposed to go out to bid. Not people with professional licenses, they understand that. But I don't want other people thinking, wait a minute, they're, you know, somehow hiding the ball here. You cannot do bids on these kind of projects. So in the future, I think we shouldn't even make a reference to it.
I don't disagree with you at all.
Okay, all right. In which case I'll move resolution 10664 and 10665.
I'll second.
Okay, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Chalamchela-
Yes.
Howell-
Yes.
Rodriguez-
Yes.
Aquino-
Yes.
And Kozlowski.
Yes. All right, please call the next item.
Okay, that takes you to your one public hearing this evening. This is resolution number 10666. A resolution approving the final engineer's report confirming the diagram and assessments and ordering continued levying of assessments for maintenance and servicing of improvements within the city of Folsom's landscaping and lighting districts as identified on the agenda.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. My name is Zachary Paris. I'm your landscape services manager here at the city of Folsom. Before you this evening is the final engineer's report for fiscal year 2122 that encompasses all of our 29 lighting and landscaping districts here within the city of Folsom. The final report presented is identical to the preliminary report that was brought before you guys on May 11th, our meeting earlier this year. The assessments proposed this year are the same as the assessments we had last year with the exception of three districts that will be utilizing their CPI. Those districts are Willow Creek Estates East Number Two, Broadstone Four, and Prospect Ridge. Beyond those three districts I just mentioned, we did have nine other districts that had CPIs built into them that were available that we did not utilize this year. Some of the notable projects that we'll be working on, we'll be finishing the renovation of a few of the monument signs for Willow Creek Estates East. We're going to be doing some tree planting projects in Broadstone Four, and then we have some fence replacements that need to be done in Cobble Ridge. We will also be continuing to do our LED retrofits in several districts, as well as ongoing tree inventory and pruning, work that we've established a program for in recent years. Lastly, we'll be continuing to focus on water-efficient irrigation modifications, as well as utilization of drought-tolerant plant material. That pretty much concludes my presentation for this evening, and we also have our assessment engineer on the line if there's any questions for our consultant.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Paris? Okay, hearing none. I'll open the, open public comment. Is there anybody that would like to speak on this item?
You have no request to speak on this item?
Okay, really? Okay, bring it back to the council then. Is there any final commentary anybody would like to make on this one? Otherwise, I will entertain a motion.
Don't we have to close the public hearing first?
Public hearing is open. Is anybody in the audience found it in their heart that they want to come tell us something about this?
I'll move resolution- I'll move resolution 10666.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmembers Chalamchela-
Yes.
Howell-
Yes.
Rodriguez-
Yes.
Aquino-
Yes.
And Kozlowski.
Yes.
Okay, that takes you to your new business item this evening. Item number nine is ordinance number 1315, an ordinance repealing and reenacting Chapter 13.22 of the Folsom Municipal Code pertaining to water system cross-connection control. This will be introduction and first reading of the ordinance.
Hello again, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Kozlowski, members of the council, Marcus Yasutaki, Environmental Water Resources Director. I've got just a quick couple of slides for this evening on this ordinance modification. Just wanted to give a little bit of background for maybe some of you that don't know it completely, and anybody in the audience, or anybody that's listening on the phone. The cross-control, cross-connection control is actually identified in the California Safe Drinking Water Act, and this was instituted in 1987, and then again revised in 2000. Two recent assembly bills, 1671 and 1180, passed in 2017, authorize the State Water Resources Control Board, and they use the Division of Drinking Water to identify what cross-control connection is required for in the state of California. And so the state board is currently developing what they call a cross-connection control policy handbook, which will be used throughout the state of California. But that is the party now that oversees cross-control connection in the state of California. What is cross-connection? It's basically an interconnection-
Or a disconnection.
Or a disconnection, between a potable water supply source and a non-potable source. So essentially, it separates the private system versus the public system. And the backflow is something that actually sounds like it is named, is flow that goes in the opposite direction, which we do not want to occur in our potable water system. And this can occur anywhere in a distribution system, and it can include any contaminants or pollutants that are on the customer side or the private side. And these are just a couple of pictures of what you might see if you're driving around town. Some of the, like, the top picture is something that's on a larger commercial building, and you might see the one on the bottom that's specific to maybe an irrigation service that you might find in a park or in a landscape area. So that's what these look like as you're going around town. So if you see these, that's what we're talking about. And then we are required to have a cross-connection control program, which we currently do, and it is identified in the current ordinance as it's previously written. So we're not changing anything in the program itself. And these are just the items that a cross-control connection program must include. And you can do that as a water agency, or you can hire that out to a state agency or public health agency that, you know, would do that for you. We have the program in-house. We have the staff in-house to be able to do this. And so basically, we adopt the rules and regulations within the ordinance. We identify what any potential cross-control connection hazards may be within the distribution system. We have a person or a staff that's certified, which we have, I believe, at least two that are certified in cross-connection control, and we have others that are testing or getting their certifications to have that license as well. Establishing the procedures for backflow testing, which is outlined in our ordinance, and then maintaining the records, locations, the tests, and any repairs that are made to these devices within the distribution system. So the main updates in 13.2 of the Folsom Municipal Code is correcting the agency name from California Department of Public Health to the State Water Resources Control Board, Division of Drinking Water. We're just making that change throughout. But we are including certain single-family residential requirements for the installation of a backflow device that were not all currently there. So if, I haven't seen this in the city of Folsom, but if, for some reason, somebody did have a well connected to their property, obviously, we don't want the potential for well water that's untreated coming back into our system. Any wastewater pumps?
I'm not sure if you're aware of this, but I know that there were some properties on Elvies Lane that were claimed to be operating on wells, specifically Jack Kip's former house.
That's good to know. We'll have to look into that.
I have it on good authority that's no longer the case.
Okay, because I know Jack used to say, oh, no, it's a well. It's like, no, it's directionally drilled into the lake, Jack.
And then, you know, if anybody has a potable water pump, so in some cases where, with the new fire flow requirements for a single-family residential homes of above a certain size, in some instances, there are not, there is not enough system pressure to provide for the sprinkler system, so a booster pump's installed on the property owner's side. And so obviously, we don't want anything potentially coming back into our system. So in those locations, we added that, which wasn't included. And then, obviously, if there's, if somebody has a wastewater pump at their house to get flow from, you know, their wastewater collection system into the city system, we obviously don't want maybe any homeowners doing their own plumbing that don't necessarily know that they shouldn't plumb that into the potable system. So we just are being extra cautious there. And the last item is-
It happened in Toronto with the reclaimed water system.
Recycled water, yes. And the last item is just the submission of the test results. Currently, the tag on the right is placed on all the devices. The testers physically have to come into, it was the water treatment plant, now it's here at City Hall, to physically pick up the tags and then go out and put these tags on all the locations. Well, we have now an online portal that allows our staff and then the testers to go in, submit the test results, and identify the locations, and see everything that's associated with that specific device. So we're adding that as a way where our testers can input that information, as well as our staff having access to all that information without having to go visit every single device. And then there's just some minor grammatical and spelling changes. So that's what this consists of, and tonight's the first reading and introduction, and I'll take any questions or feedback.
Questions from the council?
I don't have any questions.
YK, anything?
No, it's a comment. Thank you for, you know, using the technology and all those for this. Thank you.
Carrie, anything?
Nope, good job.
Sarah? Okay, I don't think there are any questions. So this one, we don't need to take action right now. It's going to come back?
Motion to introduce.
Okay, gotcha. Public comment? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to accept the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Chalamchela-
Yes.
Howell-
Yes.
Rodriguez-
Yes.
Aquino-
Yes.
And Kozlowski.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, please call the next item.
Okay, your next item this evening is item number 10. This is consideration of fiscal year 2122, funding allocation for homelessness support and direction to staff on expenditure of funds.
Good evening, everyone. The item before you is to seek your direction as to how to best use the $25,000 additional line item for issues related to homelessness that was included in the city's budget for the fiscal year that just began on July 1st. The item was a placeholder, because I heard from each of you in different ways throughout the budget planning process that this was an area of concern for you, but I did not yet obtain clear consensus or direction as to how to best use the funds. I do want to make very clear to everyone that's assembled here, and I think the City Council is very clear on this point, that we spend as a city far more than just this $25,000 line item on issues related to homelessness currently. This is just an additional nudge. Last fiscal year alone, we spent close to $900,000 on issues related to this concern. Although this $25,000 amount is relatively small, we as staff do seek to be as intentional as possible in deploying these precious funds to the highest and best use possible, as determined by the City Council tonight. I know that we have some speakers who are going to come before you tonight, including some representing organizations that are doing the hard work every day in the trenches in the community on this issue. Thank you for being here, and thank you for serving. I know that some stakeholders have already also emailed all of you proposals as to the potential use of the funds. In terms of city staff's perspective, we are not wed to any one direction. Areas of need that I would point to as a city are having a fund of approximately $5,000 available for use at the discretion of the police chief and/or the city manager, myself, to help bridge those experiencing homelessness to services of house, services or housing, including things like paying for overnight hotel stays, travel vouchers, or emergency needs that might come up. We also think $5,000 to help augment a pilot incentive program already in place in the Police Department to encourage those in encampments to keep their areas clean. And finally, it occurred to us that it would be helpful to have about $1,500 or so to provide a budget for our cooling center, which we host in the library, which to date have been used in large part by those experiencing homelessness. Right now, in opening that center, we are drawing on an itty-bitty, teeny-tiny budget line item in our library's budget, and we're going to exhaust that pretty quickly if we continue to staff it. So it would be helpful to perhaps have some money set aside for that purpose. I do have our police chief, Rick Hillman, our CFO, Stacy Tumani, and Scott Young from Sacramento South Help Housing, the organization that provides us with a homelessness navigator. They're all here tonight for any questions that might come up. And I also have Lori Easterwood, who's in the back there, who's our library director, who I recently asked to also take on the responsibility of serving as the city's homelessness liaison. So with that, I will turn it back over to you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions from the council just about what we're doing or what we're endeavoring to do? And then maybe we go to public comment. I think that's probably the way to go.
I have a question. I have a question about the, well, one, my comment about the cooling center. The cooling center is not a homeless cooling center. It is a center for everyone in Folsom. And so that was made very clear to me at the beginning. So I think to ask for $1,500 out of that $25,000 just doesn't seem right when the cooling center is not just for homeless, it's for everyone. So the other one is the $5,000 to augment incentive program. How did that come about?
So Chief Hillman can speak to that item. And again, I want to emphasize, these are just, you know, suggestions from the city perspective. I'm not saying spend the money that way. I'm just saying if, you know, these are things that came up in my conversations with Chief Hillman and others.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Rick Hillman, your police chief. And about those incentive programs, we learned from other agencies that one of the things that some agencies in our region are trying is to use incentives to offer to homeless individuals to help keep areas clean. So especially during the pandemic, when we could not abate camps, we offered incentives to individuals if they were to keep their areas clean. Those incentives that we looked at were, we started with devices that were solar-powered batteries, because we see that they often need something to power up their cell phones. So we offered solar-powered batteries to do that. We took the money, we took $5,000 out of a police asset forfeiture fund to get the program going. And then we're talking to those individuals in our community that are experiencing homelessness to see what other types of incentives we can help provide them for doing things that will keep the community nicer, and their areas nicer, because that's one of the biggest complaints that we get from others, is that the areas that they're in is just pretty bad.
Rick, what is the success rate of the incentive program?
So I was going to try to meet with Sergeant Zelaya, who, as all of you know, runs our Community Crime Suppression Unit and deals a lot with the homeless. But he's on vacation. He had the nerve to do that. And he's been on vacation for the past week or so, so he's not due back until, I believe, Thursday. So I haven't been able to talk to him directly as to exact numbers, but I have spoken with him about it in the past. And he said, it's been, it's been successful for those times that he's offered it, where he says he's very cautious with it and just doesn't give the devices out because he wants to have meaning to those, those things. And, but when he has used it, he said, it's been successful.
So the incentive, is it a gift card, or is it a, what, what is the incentive?
So for us, we just bought the solar-powered batteries. But other agencies are using gift cards. And we thought of some other things, maybe gift cards to some businesses. We want to talk to the businesses and make sure it's okay with them. We thought of, you know, pet bowls for feeding, giving water, leashes, that type of thing, something that individuals that are experiencing homelessness could, could say, yeah, I want this, and basically give them a menu of, if you take care of your area, this is what you will get in return for that.
And when you say take care of your area, does that mean that you stay within the parameters of your tent? Or does it mean no garbage? Or does it mean that, like, what, what, what are the guidelines to be able to say, oh, this person qualifies for an incentive?
It is just, we'll, we'll go there and talk to them about something, and it may be a trash pile that we want them to pick up, and we'll bring garbage cans over and, hey, if you can do this over the next couple of days, we'll be back. And that might be the incentive. Another incentive might just be that we received a report of a dog running loose from the site, and so leash up your pet. And that could be an incentive.
Okay.
So we often find that the individuals are looking for power, and that's why we chose those batteries, because we found them at our library, at our police station, and other places where there's outdoor power.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Other questions? YK?
No, I'm good, chief. Thank you. Mike, oh, no, for chief, I'm good.
Oh, okay, gotcha. Well, then, other questions in general?
It's in general, I know it's a great recommendation from city manager. I know we are already, you know, put a disclaimer that city is already spending close to $900,000 on homeless and associated activities. This $25,000 is a first time we are bringing to directly impact the homelessness. It's a direct, not indirect of 900,000. I highly recommend this all amount should be directly going to them for their upliftment. That's a comment I just want to make.
Okay. Carrie, questions about anything?
No, I do not.
Okay, Sarah right now? Okay, why don't we do public comment then?
So you have several requests to speak tonight. Your first request is from Jean Schuman. And Heather Riley and Beth Krauto have yielded their time to Jean. So Jean, if you want to come on down, we'll give you some extra time.
Okay, for nine minutes. Your call.
Good evening.
Good evening, council. Jean Schuman here, and this is my daughter Nicole.
Good evening, Nicole Schuman.
Hi there.
This-
Jean, could you get a little bit closer to the mic or lean it toward you?
Is that better? Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. Who would have thought that a cup of coffee at Starbucks and a three-day conference would create Folsom Alliance for the Unhoused? During these meetings, we talked about what the problems facing us regarding homelessness were. And if you look at the slide there, Folsom's unhoused population is growing daily, and there's a lack of affordable housing. Our city-appointed homeless navigator is only one person to serve a population of 100-plus. Folsom lacks the necessary services to help our unhoused community members struggling with mental health and addiction issues. There are few opportunities for job skills, training, and life skills that will help these individuals out of homelessness. Failure to address these issues affects the quality of life for both the housed and the unhoused. So who are we? We're an umbrella partnerships joined together to assist in working with and prevention of homelessness for our Folsom community members. And if you read the list, these are all the people that were involved in this three-day conference, and we have finally agreed to all work together and see what we can do. Scott Young made a comment at one of our meetings. He said, no other city has this kind of support. We discuss what everybody brings to the table. And if you look at the list here, this, mind you, the disclaimer is, is this is only a small portion of what each of us does bring to the table. So this is, we have, we're working with Powerhouse Ministries, Heart of Folsom, Jake's Journey Home, Has Hope. These are the nonprofits. This is Nicole's portion, what she's developing.
So I'm kind of the, a techie here. I enjoy doing business management, condensing of things. And we discussed at these meetings that we felt like we were all working in silos, meaning that no one knew what the other person was doing, right hand, left hand, both separate from each other. So there was a lot of overlap and a lot of miscommunication when certain individuals might have been cared for, and somebody's already handling that. So rather than using a program that's proprietary or paid for, like most of the systems that are being used by our police force or our other nonprofits, we're going to be using an open-source Trello, which will serve as a virtual navigator. And using this, we can, this is just a brief little example when we were getting started, it allows us to document the various nonprofits, what they offer, services, contact information. And then we can document our Folsom residents, our Folsom non-residents, so those that are here permanently, those are just passing by. And on each of those cards, for example, Ira, the top one there, Ira's in, you'll hear a little bit about Ira soon, but we have any information that would be necessary to understand Ira as an individual, what he's doing, disposition, things that the police uses, identifiers that would be safe and no violations. But it's an all-in-one board that allows us to have resources for each member, medical, mental health, rehab, you name it, and just get all of our resources together so there's an open line of communication amongst all the nonprofits. So we continue to work together.
And sort of preface this, one of our biggest problems is that we all have different specialties, and what was happening is we were- And what was happening is we were like double booking and overworking and, you know, who's where, who's the... So we finally found out what everybody's good at. And we've divided that down. So we have people that can locate them, people that can talk to them, people that can get them housing, people that can do various things. So that's why we established this, so that all of us entities that are in this alliance are able to go in here and check and see what's going on with a specific person. So the, the second solution that we came up with was the mobile day center. Mobile day center, we realized the folks could go to Powerhouse for basic daily needs. But we also realized that we had an issue getting our folks to services for treatment, assessments, and other needs. So Jake's Journey Home has opted to finance a mobile day center for Folsom. And in that day center, you will have, there's a group of us going around. We're certified in first aid, we have Narcan training, all the basics that we need. It'll also be equipped with computers so that we're able to access all online necessities that we need. Mental health, drug and alcohol treatment, transitional housing. And this is incorporating all of our nonprofits in this. So that's for the mobile day center. It allows us to do the assessments with these people and get them into, for long-term support. So this is Ira. A little background on Ira. I met him at Feeding the Fellas on Thursday evenings. Ira, just angry old guy sitting there, and I'd try and talk to him and he didn't want to talk. And one evening, he took his jacket off and he had wings, Navy wings on his arm. And I went up to him and I said, you're a vet? And he said, yeah. And I said, so we sat down and talked. And since then, we've learned that he has been, as you can see, his, he says, my story's powerful. This is after he has been in treatment. He is now an inpatient, he will come back to Folsom, go into transitional housing, but it's not going to stop there. It's wraparound services for these people. It isn't enough just to get them clean and sober. We have to change their life path. And the life path is changed by getting him into inpatient, then bringing him back. He'll be in transitional housing, he will still go to day treatment, he will still go to mental health. And we get him in job skills. He wants to become a drug and alcohol counselor. So through this mobile day center, we're gonna bring him and sign him up and get him into a certificate program so that he can do this. But I'd really like you all to just take a moment and read these things. These are things that he has texted myself and Heather and Beth. And just take a moment in silence to read that. It's just really powerful. So today, we had another gentleman go into inpatient, same place as Ira. And Ira said, I get to be a mentor before I even leave. So he's gonna help Mr. Ron go over all the hurdles. And Mr. Ron has been on the streets for a very long time. And now he's going to this path and he's finally seeing that there's, you know, light at the end of this tunnel. So this is our proposal to the council from the alliance. I know that there's other proposals and that's, those are good to have. The alliance, together, we sat, all of us sat down and decided 5,000 goes towards our mobile day center so that we can equip it with the computers and all the needs that we need in there. 5,000 to support the Folsom Police Department for the emergency funds, as has already been stated. And then 15,000, we felt for Heart of Folsom to assist with the transitional housing and permanent housing to help to fund that. Because the real problem is, is that once you take all these people, and the people we are dealing with are Folsom residents, they just don't have a residence. And getting them clean and sober is one part of it. But when you bring them back, you can't put them back out on the streets. We have to have a place to put these people. And the way to do it is to get housing, some form of housing or some form of property where they can all become housed and train them and educate them and get them the mental health, the wraparound services, so that they can become housed and change their life path. Otherwise, we're just throwing so much money, so much money into nothing. It really is, it's a bottomless pit until you start getting at the root cause. And the root cause is changing their life path. That's it.
Just for correction, I did not have a conversation when it came down to how they were going to allot it. I just said, I didn't want funds used for down payment on, 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 on people's apartments or homes. And then also, at one of the conversations at a previous council meeting, there was Sergeant Zelaya to give input on, and he had a, he weighed heavily in on, on this proposal.
He felt that the, we were talking about, you know, the gas and the driving around and the equipment. I mean, right now, I bring a computer and a hotspot in my phone, a business phone, and we sit out there with these guys. But to have a mobile day center where we can go into, you know, the back end of the park, or we can go into the, you know, these places and bring them in and get them taken care of. Sergeant Zelaya felt that 5,000 was a good amount to take care of that because we were figuring all the expenses. And then he felt that the $5,000 for supporting their emergency needs out in the field was good. So we all came up with this together. So I appreciate your time. And if there's any questions otherwise, thank you for listening and that's it.
Turn my mic back on. I, I have a question. If you could back up in your slides to the, the five member groups or agencies, maybe just... I personally am very familiar with Powerhouse and with Heart. Maybe you could jump forward to Jake's Journey Home and, and Has Hope. Maybe just take a minute and sort of walk us through what key part of this blanket of services that you're talking about that they're providing?
Okay, so, so first we have Heart, who does the housing. That's her specialty. And then Powerhouse does the drop-in day center. That's her specialty. My specialty is, is working with my friends Beth and Heather. And we go out to these people physically. And what we do is, is providing the wraparound service where we get them assessed. We make appointments for assessments for mental health and in treatment and that kind of thing. So we do all that legwork that we don't have the hoops to jump through that county or say Saks Health Help. They have to go through a lot to get done what, I mean, I'm successful in like three days. I have a guy in inpatient. Last week, he needed a physical, he needed a TB test. We made the calls, the assessment happened. He didn't have a phone either. I had to go out and find him and we had the assessment. So that's what we do. We get them into inpatient and then while they're there, we're doing, you know, the background of getting, you know, transitional to make sure they're inpatient, they're an outpatient and that kind of thing. So...
The super short answer is Jean and Nicole are Jake's Journey Home.
I knew, I knew that part. I wanted to hear the story.
I'm just saying, it's, it's, I, I don't want to feed and clothe unhoused people the rest of my life. I want to see their life path change so they can be productive people.
Fantastic.
You know? So that, that, that's my goal. And then Has Hope, Heather would have to speak to that. That's her nonprofit. She's the lady in the bush and she knows all these people. She is the only reason why any of us can find these people. I mean, I can find them now because she's taught me well. But she, I'm telling you, she's our go-to.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you very much for this. Does anybody else have any questions for Ms. Schuman? Okay, great, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. We have other requests to speak?
Yeah, the next request is from Jan Ingram, and Jan will be followed by Ed Kelly. John, sorry. Come on down, Jan.
Let's make it Jan.
Hello. Good evening. Good evening. My timer somewhere? Okay. I'm John Ingram, I'm the Director of Community Care at Powerhouse Ministries. So I'm representing Powerhouse tonight. Powerhouse has been working with the under-resourced and unhoused members of our community for the last 29 years in Folsom. Next year will be our 30th anniversary. Our Women and Children's Center has a success rate of 91% through our case management and focus on prevention and care. So we're currently hosting the only drop-in center in Folsom. We focus on triage, referrals, and medical. We're a hub for other organizations, including Heart and SSHH. In 2019, we saw 151 unique housed, unhoused individuals. In 2020, that went to 172. And in 2021, we've already seen 121 unique unhoused individuals. In 2020, that looks like 1,117 instances of care for them coming into our office. And this year, we've already been visited close to 700 times. The unhoused residents of Folsom are coming to our drop-in center. We have volunteers working in case management. With these funds, we can increase our efficacy. We are strategic in what we offer and how often we duplicate a resource. We work hard not to contribute to the increasing homelessness camps in Folsom. And we're asking for the 25,000 to put towards a part-time case management position at Powerhouse. Why is a case management the best use of funds and investment back into Folsom? It's because we assess each person, track, and follow through the resources. We have federal funding already in place to provide housing, hotels, and food. Assistance with mental health and addiction, our unhoused need a level of follow-up, which we can provide through our resources. Organizations, individuals are trying this on their own, but under the leadership of Powerhouse, we can have cohesive and successful management over clients' cases. We're funded from churches in Folsom, civic organizations, and private donors. Our board members are strong civic leaders in the community. We have over 1,000 volunteers that work with us each year. We're not a small organization, but we're robust and we're strong. We have the space, capacity, reputation, knowledge, and skills to make a significant impact towards homelessness in Folsom. Thank you.
Questions for John? Okay, I have one.
Yes.
How, how does your experience and sort of expertise in case management and intake and guiding people to services differ from the presentation that we just heard? In terms of what, because, because you are here and also part of this other presentation. So how do you, how do you, how do you square, what are you actually asking for? Because we have a request from Powerhouse Ministries as part of the group and you're asking us...
So we, as Powerhouse, are, yeah, we are playing, you know, just like Heart's gonna come up and give their own as well. We are part of the alliance.
Okay.
But we also have our own goals as an organization that we're gonna work towards. But as an alliance member, I am an alliance member, you know, got, we also came up with a separate one that I also think is worthwhile. But I think with case management, I can't speak necessarily to how Jean does case management. I am not as familiar with how, this alliance is very new for me. I'm not gonna speak on her behalf. But I think with us, we focus on care and prevention. And we have a long history of doing that with success. And so we found that we're not just looking for quick fixes. We might have to meet an immediate need to gain trust, to gain the ability for someone to work. But we do have the trust and reputation of a lot of our members of Folsom. And so we'll, we also just kind of walk through them with that process.
Okay. You realize the unusual position you've put us all in? To try and understand how to distinguish between what services you would provide as part of the alliance that was just described?
Yeah.
And what you would do independently?
Yeah, I would say a big difference between the last proposal and this one is like, that's like a mobile day center, right? Which is where brick and mortar?
Sure.
And we have a little bit more capacity within our space to have resources on site. I'm not saying they don't offer resources or anything like that. I'm not trying to speak down to it.
I'm not trying to, you know, break that down.
We thought Jean was gonna go last, it would be less awkward and more awkward for her.
I was gonna ask this question.
Jean got put first, so thanks Elaine or whoever that was.
No, no matter what order you guys went in, I was gonna ask the same question of whoever was up next.
Yeah, 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 no, you're fine. So I think that's it. I think as Powerhouse, this is what we see as the best solution.
Yeah.
You know, if not us, then them.
Yeah, well, I mean, the, the, the good and bad of this conversation is that we have these problems to try and address.
Definitely.
But we have lots of people who are interested in doing the work. So, you know, we're, we're sort of winning.
So is Heart gonna come up now and ask for 25, too?
For different reasons, but yes.
All right. Thank you very much.
This is kind of an unholy alliance, apparently.
We're not all church members, I mean, just a couple of us. Is that it for me, or?
Any other questions?
Nancy's watching this right now, so I'll probably get a text in a second. Sorry, Nancy.
I don't want to ask more tough questions.
You don't have any questions?
I do, but I don't want to ask tough questions.
You can ask me something, though?
You're good, John, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
You're part of that alliance and they're making a proposal and you probably might have said something. Is that reasonable, the previous proposal, what they said as an alliance, right?
Like, did I actually give input in that? Is that what you're asking? Yeah, 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 definitely was in that meeting, that was not a lie.
Right, it was reasonable.
Yeah.
Okay, good, thanks.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
That helps us.
Mr. Kelly? Come on down.
Go ahead, Ed, ask for 50.
Okay. I'm Ed Kelly, hi, Council and Mayor.
Welcome.
I'm Ed Kelly, I'm the past president and I'm speaking on Judy Alexander's behalf. She's up in Seattle, she was escaping the heat. But cooled down today, so that's good. Heart's presentation is actually not far from what the alliance's presentation is. Heart came into City of Folsom in 2017 and there was a big vacancy of resources available to the homeless people. Powerhouse has been here for 29 years, as you've heard. They are the center that everybody knows. They're, they're the ones that are giving out laundry vouchers and helping people get to meetings and all like that. I volunteer there as well. What we do at Heart is we try to lift people out of homelessness and get them to the resources so they can be productive members of society. We don't want to just make them comfortable in the homelessness. So our, our desire is to get them to the next step. One of the big next steps that's needed is transitional housing. That means we get somebody off the street, work through their issues, get them into a job training or a mentorship program, get them so that they can start earning money, and then hopefully into housing. Low-income housing, hopefully, if there is any. But at least get them off the street. That's our, that's our goal and that's our objective. And I don't think anybody behind me is, is disagreeing with that. That's what we want to do. We don't want to just make it easy for them to be homeless. So Judy has added these numbers up and asked me to present them. And they do add up to a little more than $25,000, but not much. The 5,000, as they're, they're asking for the support to the navigator, is one of the things that we think is essential. In the past, Heart has been the bank for the navigator doing those things. So we've been the ones that were buying tickets to get people someplace. And that's, we're, we're making success, so that's fine. But we would like the navigator to at least be able to have those funds when, when she needs them. We're asking for 20,000 in the transitional housing program. Transitional housing is expensive, you know, not only the rent, but the, the follow-up and the things that they need to get going. But we do believe that is a big step to get somebody off the street so they can take a shower to get to work, they can, you know, eat and, you know, be healthy and, and become productive members. And then the other 5,000, which adds up to 30, but the council gets to make the decision, is our winter shelter. So we run a 12-week winter shelter, we've run it for four years. That is our opportunity to learn who these people are and to find out what we can do to move them forward. And that has been a successful way for us to make that connection. I do believe that the mobile center is also a good place. But if you guys really wanted to do something, we have a Powerhouse brick and mortar. We would like to have a, let them do their job as, as Powerhouse Ministries and create a brick and mortar day, day center, which Judy has asked for several times. Basically, it would be similar to what Powerhouse is. It's a place they could go to use the computers, they could go to make telephone calls, they could meet their mentors, they could go to training classes, things like that. We can do that in the, in the trailer, but in the long run, it would probably be nice to have a physical place. And that's, that's really all it is.
I'm, I'm not sure I completely understood what it is you want the $5,000 for relative to the winter shelter.
We use for transportation, buying cots and food, showers, miscellaneous supplies. This last year with the COVID expenses, we, it cost us a lot more to, to keep the place up and clean and all that stuff. So the 5,000 would just be to, to be able to let us run the, the winter shelter.
So what's, what's the deal? Did, did Heart buy the cots that are used during the winter shelter?
We do, we buy them, yes. We, and of course, they have a life, so they, they do have to be replaced. The sleeping bags and the cots do wear out after a while. So we do replace those as they go.
Okay, so they don't bring their own sleeping bags?
No, no, everything is provided.
Okay.
Everybody gets the same thing when they're there. They all get the same cot, the same sleeping bag.
Perhaps I missed something, but what food services are you providing?
A lot of times, we've had to, if we don't get donations of food, we end up purchasing food for, for them. A lot of times, we've gone out and got healthy breakfast foods and stuff because we didn't get any, any donations for that.
Okay, so it's predominantly the breakfast? And, and I'm only asking this because two of us sitting up here actually provide food during the winter shelter.
Yeah, I know. And we're very, very grateful for that. But a lot of times, the, the takeaway breakfast that we, we had, a lot of it was just sweets. And so we were trying to get...
Okay, well, my suggestion honestly, Ed, is that if you make that... Okay, well, my suggestion, honestly, Ed, is that if you make that known to the, to the folks, both the, the private individuals and the restaurants that are providing that, that you guys are interested in breakfast stuff as well, I know we're happy to do it.
Right. No, and it's usually not an issue.
And it won't be raspberry Danish.
Yeah. Got a lot of those.
My partner will eat all that.
All right. Any questions from the council right now? Okay. Thank you very, very much.
Appreciate it.
All right. Any other requests to speak?
You have no further requests to speak on this item.
Okay. Anybody else in the audience want to provide some input on this topic?
And Mayor, if I could, we do have a, a slide that I could ask our library director to put up that we just took the liberty of kind of summarizing what, you know, we saw in the proposals ahead of time, which gels with what I heard tonight, and then these few items I listed from the city earlier today. So just for purpose of discussion, it might be helpful to have that up. Thank you, Lori.
I guess we are looking for commentary, and YK, you are immediately to my left, so I'm going to call on you first.
Someone's going to probably have some questions.
Oh, come on down. Sorry, I didn't see you there.
Evening. I'm Mary Kay Williams. I have a question. You mentioned that last year you spent over $900,000 indirectly on the unhoused. So why isn't there more money in the budget this year, more than the 25,000? Thank you.
So that, those expenses are still in the budget this year. This is above and beyond. So I expect we would again spend, you know, close to 900,000 in the current fiscal year between, and this includes things like our police officers' time, two officers devote to this issue, police sergeants' time, code enforcement officers, our planners in our community development department working on affordable housing, grant administration, our public works crews working on cleanups, our fire department responding to medical calls, lots of staff time on the behalf of our parks and rec team, and also senior maintenance staff hours, just in terms of personnel costs alone, and those are all still ongoing in this budget. We also, over the years, we have very specific direct costs, like paying for the Navigator that I mentioned through the Sacramento Self-Help Housing. We have a contract with that organization. Cleanup contracts, like with 100 Got Junk and Junk King, you know, those are direct costs. So all of that is still in the budget, and it's, you know, will be about 900,000 again, I'm guessing, this fiscal year, and this is just a now above and beyond, trying to do something a little more.
And, and just to follow along that, that was actually a discussion that we had when we were doing the budget conversations a couple of months ago. There's a whole bunch of people that would love to see $5 million added to being able to provide more services for, for unhoused folks. We don't physically have the money. So there's, you know, our, our, our expected revenue stream for the City of Folsom is what it is. So we have a, a set size of the pie, and we have to figure out how that money's going to get spent.
Okay. We're going to bring this back to the council now for council comments. And YK, you are to my left, so you get to go first.
I'll take up. I want to sincerely thank the, the Folsom Alliance. It's, 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 you know, I, I have been working with several nonprofits here, and we always talk, and there are so many people that want to do the things, and finally, they're here. I do see one or two are missing, but I'm going to sincerely encourage them to join that group rather than giving us a call. Let it be the one voice. And my recommendation on the summary, as I mentioned, I think before, even though Mayor said, "Do you have any questions?", but I gave a statement. So I'm going to repeat my statement again on the middle one, Folsom Alliance. The emergency funds for the PD, I love our PD, you know, they are so smart and innovative. And we do have the Folsom Police Officers Association, where probably when they do Next Back Event, we can promote this kind of thing and get that 5,000 through that route. I would like the entire funds goes to the transitional housing, because I have seen people, even though whatever we do, if we can't put them inside a house and monitor, that's important, too. I think Ed is going to shake his hand 10 times. If we can't do that, all our hard work is going to go underdrying. So that's my recommendation. So I'm going to the middle one with the mobile center. Yes, I agree. And the middle $5,000 can be moved to the transitional housing to make that 20,000. I wish we have more money for the, the winter shelter. That's where we are. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Rosario?
Some of my comments are, I, I, I want to scratch the $1,500 for the cooling center because that's already, it's not a homeless, it's not a cooling center for homeless individuals, as I said earlier. I think the encampment cleanup, that 5,000, there's already money in the budget for that, so I, I'd rather keep it there. The Navigator funds, I think that could, there are a couple of things up there that could probably be put together. Navigator funds, and then the Alliance has made a recommendation of the emergency fund, which includes the Folsom PD and Navigator. So the Navigator currently reports to Sergeant Zalaya, and so them two together can make recommendations about bus tickets, vouchers, hotel stays. So those two can be together. But I, I think, having worked with the Alliance, I, the recommendation of the mobile day center, the emergency funds, which includes money for PD and the Navigator, and then the 15,000 to the housing for Hart to use, is probably my, my, my pick.
Carrie, your thoughts?
The only, the only thing I'm going to say to start off with is that I love that everybody participated in the Alliance. I am, however, going to tell all of you that I'm very disappointed that the Alliance itself comes up with a recommendation, and then Powerhouse comes in and tries to take the money, and then Hart comes in and asks for that money and more. That disappoints me. That leads me to believe that it's a little bit less of an Alliance than I had hoped. Having said that, my, my, my suggestion to Hart on the winter shelter expenses, have you guys gone to Dick's Sporting Goods or any of, any of the retailers in town to see if they will donate those cots or the sleeping bags? Just a suggestion, rather than you guys buying them. I think that, that could be a, a really simple way to eliminate the need for that $5,000. My other, my other inclination would basically be, I, I really like the idea of the mobile day center. I know that, that Powerhouse has done a great job for a long time, but I think part of the reason that Gina and Nicole came up with that whole concept is because everybody's not going to go to Powerhouse. So I think they are going to have a better opportunity to collect those people that are showing less inclination to get help, and that maybe Gina and Nicole and, and some of the others in the group have to do a little bit more coercing to get them to be willing to discuss the help thing. So I'm, I'm kind of leaning in that direction. I, I don't know that, honestly, I don't know that I really want to pick. I think there's, there's other things that can be, that could be done. But, you know, if I had to go in order, my number one would probably be the Alliance, because I know that all of you actually participated in that.
And Carrie, just to, you know, express a little more, Ira's probably a really good example. He would not have gone somewhere. They went out to get him.
Right, I, I, yeah.
And that's, you know, I mean, Ira's probably a really good example. And Ron coming is, these are, you have to go out to them to build that relationship, and, and so, yeah.
So that's, that's kind of where I am right now. And, you know, and frankly, in the future, my personal feeling is that we have spent, we have spent, the city has spent, all of the individuals involved in this have spent an inordinate amount of time arguing over $25,000. And I would really prefer not to do that in the future, and I'd really like, and, and we'll see where the budget gets next year. Maybe the number's bigger, hopefully the number's bigger, because hopefully the budget's in much better condition than it, than it was coming into this, this current fiscal year. But I, I really would like to get this assigned to the city manager. It's very well below her signing authority. And I appreciate the input, and I think that we will continue to get input from the folks that help the homeless folks in Folsom throughout the course of the year, whether that be contacting council members directly, coming to speak at council meetings. But I would prefer not to have three or four council meetings to discuss $25,000 that I think the city manager is more than qualified to, to make some determinations as to where this money's going to go.
Well, I think you're going to get five different answers. But first, I would like to get a little clarification, maybe either from Chief Hillman or the gentleman from Sacramento Self-Help Housing. Is it Scott? Okay. I, I just want a little clarification on the Navigator. I know the Folsom Police Department holds the contract, but I don't believe it's correct to say that the Navigator reports to the City of Folsom or the Folsom Police Department. I just want to get a little clarification on that. Who does the Navigator report to? What if one of the nonprofits, you know, contacts her? Does she, I, I just want a little bit more clarification. Whoever wants to come to the podium.
Scott Young. I'm the Assistant Director of Homeless Outreach and Navigation with Sacramento Self-Help Housing. So you're correct in that the Navigator does not respond directly to the Police Department. She's an employee of Sacramento Self-Help Housing, so she reports directly to me as her supervisor. And then we work, because the city is paying for the contract, we work very closely with the city and with the Police Department to provide services and to work collectively with Hart, and specifically Hart, and with the Police Department to provide services and to, to help locate and, and then be able to have the Navigator provide the services. But we also are an active member of the Alliance, and we support the work of the Alliance. The Alliance is only a couple of months old, so I think that some of the, you know, stuff that Carrie you addressed of, you know, being disappointed, I think part of that is just kind of growing pains of a young organization that is, you know, we may not be, we're trying not to be siloed, but at the same time, we all really believe strongly in what we do. And so I think it's going to take some time to work collectively together and to come up with proposals that we maybe can all better agree on. But, but Sacramento Self-Help Housing is really committed to working with committee, uh, community partners and doing this type of collaborative work here in the City of Folsom.
So if somebody, for example, if Jean were to call the Navigator and say, "Hey, you know, I need you to", or "Could you talk to this person?", she would respond to that?
Correct. And Jean can call me as well. And we've, you know, so, yeah, the Navigator can only be in one place at one time. So if the Navigator's doing office hours at Powerhouse or doing, you know, out with Sergeant Zalaya, that kind of thing, then Jean could call me, and we would arrange to do that. But, yeah, the goal is for, we, we see, you know, having somebody like Jean and having somebody like Heather out in the field, out in the bushes, doing that kind of work is, is amazingly helpful to us, because the Navigator is then going to be able to, you know, be directed to some of these people that she might not otherwise be able to find or know about, so.
Got it. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions?
That's all the questions I have, but I do have comments.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. So I think it's fair to say that, that under the city category, Navigator funds for distribution 5,000 is the same thing as the emergency funds for FPD distribution under the Alliance. Okay. So I am in 100% support of that. You know, we have the contract with the, with the Navigator. I don't think it's appropriate that Powerhouse or Hart or whomever has to be out of pocket for that. It seems like that's an expense we should pick up. Yes, we're only talking about $25,000 right now, but I think in the future, it is very possible that we're going to be talking about a much bigger sum, because it doesn't appear that the Boise decision is going anywhere. It doesn't appear that the state has any real solutions. You know, we've had at least a dozen fires in the past year, so we know we can't just keep status quo. A dozen fires started in homeless encampments, so we cannot just do the status quo. So I, I think in the near future, we're going to have to be talking about doing this on a much larger scale. It is my personal belief, and, and first of all, I want to say kudos to all of you, to Rosario for spearheading and, and everybody out there. I, I think the increased cooperation and communication is fantastic, and I know you all do really, really great work. When it comes time, though, to committing city resources, taxpayer dollars, I really think that we are better off selecting one nonprofit and putting our money there. And there's a couple of reasons I think that's the case. Number one, I, I think that gives us the ability to ensure that whichever nonprofit we choose, their vision, their mission aligns as closely as possible with ours. Because like you said, you have different niches, you have different, you know, missions. I think overall, it's the same. But secondly, I think it provides a, a layer of accountability that we say, "Hey, you know, we're going to give you this money. Here are our expectations for how it is spent, and we want some sort of accounting." And then thirdly, I think it provides clarity to the public. And I know that, you know, Hart, Folsom was formed because the Folsom Police Office, Police Department reached out to the faith-based community. And for the past four-plus years, certainly the two and a half years that I've been on the council, the message that, that the city has delivered when the public has asked is, "We work with Hart." I mean, Carrie, when you were the mayor, we had a group of residents who were meeting monthly, kind of informally, it wasn't, you know, any formal organization, but they were just interested in the, in the topic, wanted to do what they could. You spoke to them, I spoke to them, presumably other council members do, too, and, and the message that we relayed was, "We're working with Hart." And it is my understanding that that group has now been folded into a subcommittee of Hart and is helping with, on the housing subcommittee. I, I personally think the relationship with Hart should continue, and that should be our go-to. So whether that's, you know, 20,000 for traditional, transitional housing, or, or whatever number, but it, it just seems to me like, whatever, whatever nonprofit it is, let's decide on one, and that's, if we're going to make investments, that's where our money goes, rather than a little bit here, a little bit there. That's my feeling. So, so I, I guess if I had to vote, I would say 5,000 for the Navigator slash Folsom PD's discretion, and then 20,000 to Hart for transitional housing.
Okay. Excellent. For my part, I, you know, I want to echo the thanks that everybody has given to you guys that do this work. It's, it's, it's difficult that we have this problem, and it's really a testament to your spirit of service to be willing to take it on as a, as, as your life's work in many of your cases. So it's, it's marvelous that we have the, you know, the, the number of people that are willing to step up to, to bat and, and deal with this and help these people that have fallen on hard times find a better path. I agree completely with you, Carrie, with respect to this amount of money for future budgets. This is, you know, it's, it's something that should simply be a grant fund that is managed by the city manager through an appropriate application process. So I, I, I do believe that, you know, the, the, we're going to be talking about other funding sources at some point for other programs, and as we add kind of ambition to our cause, we'll need to talk about that. But with respect to this part of the budget going forward, it's, should definitely just, just stay within the staff. As it relates to, you know, sort of the formation of the Folsom Alliance for the unhoused, it's, it's fantastic that you found each other and found a way to kind of find where the overlaps and the, and the skill sets matched up so that you could collectively make this presentation that we saw and also come up with a, a very reasoned proposal on how to, how to spend this, this, this money. And I don't see any reason to deviate from that. I think it, I, I did have, I do have the question that I'm going to let the city manager sort out, which is, okay, if we actually go down this path where we're saying 5,000 for a mobile day center and 15,000 to Hart, is that really just a grant to Hart and then a sub-grant from Hart to whoever is operating the mobile day center? But I'll just ask you to sort that out so that we're not splitting things up, because I do think it should, the fewer hands that the money, you know, goes to is probably, just simplifies things for us. But I, you know, I, you know, for my part, I think the, I think that is a absolutely reasoned and sensible allocation of those funds. sensible allocation of those funds. So if there's other commentary anybody would like to make, I'm happy to entertain it or a motion.
I have just a last comment, just because I want this to be very clear. When we spoke, I don't know, a couple of months ago, and we wanted to hear what Sergeant Zelaya, who works, you know, directly with them, he goes out, he does ride-alongs, he has, he knows every single one of them, almost every single one of them. They know him. They can, you know, I'll never forget that on one of the ride-alongs where I was in the backseat and somebody was so mad that the police department showed up, and then they saw it was Sergeant Zelaya, and the guy said, oh, and his demeanor went from like, what are you doing, to, oh, a very warm, they have a very good relationship with him, a lot of respect. And so that was really something that came out that was really important to know what Sergeant Zelaya have to say. And so when this, when this came out, Sergeant Zelaya weighed heavily on the mobile day center, $5,000, the emergency fund for PD and the Navigator, $5,000, and housing, $15,000 to Hart. So I just want to share that it was heavily weighed in by Sergeant Zelaya.
Very good.
I'll move to, move forward with the Folsom Alliance proposal for the time being and ideally in future years, have this be at the discretion of the city manager.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Okay. We have a motion and two seconds.
Councilmember Chalamchilla?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes.
And Kozowski?
Yes. All right. Thank you. Thank you again.
Now, all of you guys go forth and hold hands.
Yes. All right.
I want to see you all driving around in the mobile day center together.
Let's call the next item.
Your next item this evening is item number 11. This is Presentation and Public Workshop Regarding Solid Waste Rate Studies and City Council Direction to Staff. And just as a reminder, the staff report was amended.
And obviously, if anybody's not super excited about solid waste, you're welcome to take off.
Not excited about solid waste, huh? Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council.
I'm still trying to figure out what my friends in the back are here for tonight, but thank you guys for staying through the whole meeting. And Connie, can you give me a call tomorrow about something totally separate? Thank you.
So, good evening. Marie McKeith, the General Services Manager for the Public Works Department overseeing the Solid Waste Division. And joining me this evening is Ryan from R3 Consulting, who can help answer any questions about the rate study and also about SB 1383, which is prompting the rate study that we've recently completed. So I'll start this evening with just a quick overview of SB 1383. I know that you are all familiar with it, and we've talked about it in the past, but just to reiterate that that is what's driving this rate study. And then I'll go into the methodology that was used, which includes updating the current rate model, the costs that we included in this study, the utility commission meetings, as well as some strategies that we included to minimize the increases. And then we'll go over the specific impact to ratepayers and the next steps. So SB 1383 is California Short-lived Climate Pollutant Reduction Strategy. It is not a solid waste law, it is a pollution law, but the strategy that they are implementing to reduce pollution is to keep organic waste out of the landfill. So that's how it impacts solid waste. And the costs were unknown during the prior rate study. Unfortunately, we were in a position at that time where we had not raised rates for many years, and we were being impacted by China National Sword and the crash of the recycling market. And so we had to proceed with that rate study without including the costs of this legislation, even though we knew that it was, that it was coming. And so we did that with the statement at the time that we would be back within a few years when we knew what the impacts were going to be. And so the regulations were just completed in November of 2020 and become effective in January of '22. So we had just a little over a year to pull these programs together. And the mandated programs are, as I mentioned, to divert organics from the landfill, and there are several of them, and they're very prescriptive and costly. If we chose not to comply with this law, the fines are up to $10,000 a day, which is about $3.6 million a year. So it is, it's costly to implement these programs, it's also costly not to. So these are a few of the requirements that we need to comply with to move forward. The one that most people are learning about or think of when they think of this law is the food waste collection from all businesses and residents. And that is, that is one of the real heavy lifts, it's also the most expensive part of the law and the biggest impact to our rates. We also have to establish an edible food recovery program, and that will include identifying the generators, how much they are currently throwing away, ensuring that they have contracts with food recovery organizations, and that that food is recovered for human consumption. We have prescriptive outreach and education requirements, which goes right down to the level of requiring that we have to label every can with what goes in it and monitor and make sure that everyone knows how to use these programs. We also have a procurement requirement. We have to procure recycled paper throughout the city, which doesn't sound like much, but then we also have to keep track of every purchase and the percentage of recycled paper, and it has to be part of our implementation record available for audits. And we have to procure material made from the green waste and food waste that is picked up here in the city. And the law requires us to purchase 0.08 tons per capita of recycled organic material. So we have put together an estimate, that's over 6,000 tons of material per year, by the way, and we've put together an estimate to meet those needs through the purchase of mulching compost, and we have to find uses for that material.
We can build a park on top of all the tailing piles that remain.
With lots of hills.
Yes.
We also are responsible for securing the access to food recovery capacity. So that's both for the edible food and for the food that we need to have recycled by composting. And that's not just for the material that we haul, we also have to get written documentation of capacity that's available for all of the contracted haulers that are hauling food waste for us. And then, of course, we have to monitor and conduct enforcement that will include and is required to include an update to our ordinance that includes enforcement mechanisms with very prescriptive dollar amounts of what we must charge for first, second, and third offense for those who don't comply with this law. And so with all of those programs in mind, obviously, we wanted to make sure we had the money to do what we need to do for the state. So we reviewed the impact of recent increases in the solid waste fund, just to see where we were at and what we could absorb with the increases we've already done and what we needed to do to move forward. So I will go over those findings. Then we followed that up with an update to the rate model of the 2019 study. In 2019, we spent over a year doing a very in-depth rate model that takes all of our expenses and revenues and divides them by program so that we make sure we're charging residents the right amount for residential and commercial the right amount for commercial. So we were able to use that rate model that we put all of that time into and update the base year to fiscal year '21, which incorporates any impacts that we have had since the rate study. And then we added the new expenses, and then, of course, then it's just a matter of adjusting the percentages of any rate adjustments to meet the obligations. So the status of the solid waste fund, the rate model forecasts that by the end of fiscal year '23, we would be at $1.3 million. That's what was approved in the rate study. At the time that we did this projection in the last few months, the projected year-end for fiscal year '21 was almost $5 million. So at a quick glance, that would look like it's a very healthy fund, we're doing fine. So I wanted to dig a little deeper and get a more clear picture of what we were seeing. So the revenues, as you can see, are pretty much right on track of what was forecast in the, in the rate study. They're a little bit higher even, but pretty close. The operating expenses are concerning because they're lower, and they really shouldn't be lower if we did everything that we are needing to fund through our rates. And then the capital vehicle expenses are lower as well. The capital vehicle expense shown is for fiscal year '21, but when we look at the balance of the fund, it actually includes vehicle replacement less than what was planned in the amount of $2.1 million. So that hasn't impacted the fund yet, and those vehicles still need to be replaced. We also, for whatever reason, fuel costs were lower in 2020, and so we achieved a savings over our forecast by about $200,000 in fuel cost. We also had financial savings from vacant positions and turnover, so we had some senior employees retire and newer employees come in at the bottom of the scale, and that's fine, but the vacant positions have been concerning because we need, we need our positions to be filled, we need the help. And so having driver shortages puts more strain on overtime, as well as, you know, denying time off and people not being able to have the benefits that, of working for the city. So we achieved some savings, but they're not something that can be counted on long-term. And then the biggest savings, close to $700,000, what was the result of six positions that we funded in the rates that we never actually added. So there should be a lot more money based on those savings than what we're seeing in the balance. So where did all those extra savings go? So the expenses that I saw that ate up some of those savings, vehicle maintenance increase. So we budgeted or forecast in the rate model that for fiscal year '21, we would spend $447,000 for vehicle maintenance, and we will top $1 million for fiscal year '21 for vehicle maintenance. And then recycling, green waste, and processing increases, there were more increases to those than what was in the rate study. The reason is that when we did the rate study, China National Sword had just hit, and we hadn't felt all of the impacts. So for recycling, that's where that extra expense came from. The residential recycling, which we knew some of the impacts, and we were in the process of negotiating our residential recycling contract, but when it was all said and done, it was $142,000 a year more in processing fees than what was included in the rate study. The commercial recycling, we hadn't actually felt any impact of the China National Sword. We still had a contract. It was not set to expire until October of 2020, and we were making about $100,000, about $200,000 on commercial recyclables. And then right around the time of the rate study, December of 2019, the facility shut down and gave us one hour's notice that they were no longer taking our material. And so we had to go out with an RFP, and now we're paying $50,000. So we had a $250,000 swing in the commercial recycling. And then for green waste, there is an unfunded law that eliminated green waste used as ADC or landfill cover as diversion. So to continue receiving diversion credit, we had to change facilities and take it somewhere where it could be composted. The cost of that, that was about $200,000 higher than what we had been paying when we were taking it to Kiefer for ADC. So this will also go up. On your consent calendar this evening was the agreement with Agarmin. That's the result of an RFP for our food waste processing as we move forward with the compliance for 1383. That contract, as soon as it is executed, which will probably be by beginning of next month, will increase our annual cost of processing by another $270,000. And then when we add food waste to our program, it will be another $200,000. So the hits just keep coming. So resetting the base year in the rate model takes into account all of those fluctuations that we saw and all of the unanticipated expenses up until now. So we took a really close look at that, and what, the question that we asked ourselves and we wanted to answer was, would we be coming to you asking for a rate increase if it were not for SB 1383 in consideration of all those other expenses that hit us that we didn't know were coming? And the answer is no. SB 1383 is the reason that we are here today. We could have made it, we have two more years of scheduled increases that are already approved, and we could have gotten by with those. However, now because we're moving forward with a rate study, we have incorporated in some expenses beyond just 1383 and adjusted for those items that I just mentioned. So the expenses that were added for 1383 are listed here. The $2.3 million for startup, that is, just as it sounds, it's startup, and we've put that into the rate study in the first couple of years, and that has created some challenges in establishing rates because we're not used to having just a, just a one-time being hit, hey, here's a big extra expense all at once. And then the rest of it is ongoing annual cost. This would be first-year costs, and then, of course, there's annual escalators on everything. And the other expenses that we're anticipating within the next five years, which would be the noticing period for the rate study, would be electric refuse trucks, two trucks for a pilot program, and also increased landfill fees. Kiefer Landfill has increased their fees. Right now, we are benefiting from a contract, but it ends at the end of, at the end of this fiscal year, and then we will be adjusting back to the gate rate. So actually, we'll still have a reduced rate, but it'll be based on the gate rate, so our discount will be on the gate rate as opposed to what we initially contracted for. And that is expected to cost about $600,000 in the first year, and then, of course, escalate annually from there. So the next step in our methodology was to go ahead and adjust the rates using what we have done before, which is to change the percentages of the increases and watch the fund balance as we do that to ensure that we're covering all of the expenses. So if we were to fund this with rates alone, we would add an increase in January, so a mid-year increase. The July, the next two July increases are already scheduled, but we would add that mid-year increase, and it would have to be 44% for residential, 22% for commercial in order to meet the needs. There were, as we went through this process, we found that there were some problems with just addressing this with rates alone, which obviously it increases the rate so high so fast that that's a really obvious problem. But with the startup costs being so high, we had to raise the rates higher just to cover those startup costs, which means then we're collecting more money than we need to down the road. And that could potentially put us in a situation like we were in a few years ago, where we go several years without an increase because the rates are high enough to cover everything, and then, you know, we hit people with an increase all at once. And we don't want to do that. So the preference is to propose steady increases every year, just as needed. The other problem with this is although we're collecting, we would be collecting a large amount of money all at once upfront and high- all at once upfront and high rates, because there's so much cost initially, it still allows the fund to drop below a million dollars within the five-year period, actually by the end of fiscal year 23. And that is not ideal either. Our subsidized programs and the full suite of services that we offer is another challenge to continue to fund those while also doing this. And this actually results in higher rates during the five-year period than the other solutions that we have come up with. So after seeing this, we came up with some mitigating ideas to keep the rates a little lower as we move forward. So one of the ideas that we came up with was an internal loan, a low-interest loan with a five-year payback, 5 million dollars. We also propose charging for household hazardous waste and bulky waste collection, which are currently included and bundled into the rate. So what we've put into the proposal is a small fee for each of those programs, $25 per pickup for bulky waste, $15 for HHW. Those amounts are nominal fees. They don't come close to covering the cost. I actually, I looked up the cost from the rate study, the estimates that I had done on the actual cost of the pickups. And bulky waste is about 110, and HHW was much more than I remembered. It's about 250 dollars a pickup. So they're expensive programs, and these would just help to recover some of the funds and recover them from the people who are actually using the programs versus everybody equally across the board.
Can I just ask one quick question? Are these options, are these intended to be options, or are you intending to suggest all of them?
Right now, we have a proposal that includes all of them, but I also did include further in the presentation, an option to continue to provide the first household hazardous waste and bulky waste pickup at no charge.
Okay.
Because I recognize that these would be major changes for residents in Folsom to pay for these services. So we're also proposing charges for the second green waste and recycle and increased rates for all extra cans beyond that. So right now, we've got the second green waste and recycle bundled into the single solid waste rate, and that, of course, is subsidized because everybody pays some portion of that cost, whether they get that second can or not. The same is true of the third can, but it's less of a subsidy because we currently charge $2.75. So the proposal on that is to charge $8.40 per can for the organics and 5.50 per can for the recycle. And the cost in the proposal for the second cans would not take effect until next July when we actually add food waste. That also would correspond with weekly collection. So if you have one can right now, picked up every other week, you're going to go to four pickups a month, and you'll double your capacity. If you have two cans and you turn one in so that you don't have to pay that extra $8 a month, you would still have the same capacity that you did for green waste because we'll pick it up every week. The same is not true with recycling. You would still have the same capacity and pay a little bit for that to help cover that cost of processing that material. And then the final one is to institute a temporary SB 1383 surcharge. So all of these suggestions were reviewed with the Utility Commission. We have met with them four different times regarding SB 1383 programs and the rate proposals. And at our special meeting last Tuesday, they did approve a motion to support all of these mitigation measures and to come to all of you with a rate increase proposal. So with all of these mitigating measures, what we could do is lower the mid-year to just a very moderate 5% increase, and then the SB 1383 surcharge would be 10. So the rate would be 46.25. Let me see if I can. So if we go back a couple, the rate would have been 49.75. So it's a little lower, but the bill would include this separate line item that basically calls out that 1383 is the reason for this extra charge. And the Utility Commission was very supportive of having a separate line item on the bill to make sure that it's understood that that's what the surcharge is for.
I think it would also give residents an insight into it's not just an extra charge for the City of Folsom, because I oftentimes hear, oh, it's only to make more money. But it really shows that there's, you know, SB 1383 is a costly charge to the city.
Absolutely. There's legislation behind this that is making it unavoidable for us, and that message really should be carried through to the community because it is the truth.
It should include the author name for that bill.
Right on their bill every month. So the surcharge would help to bridge the gap to pay for some of those initial high costs. This also includes the 5 million dollar loan, of course, and the charges for the currently subsidized services. So it would sunset in the end of fiscal year 23. And as you can see, there would be a slight drop from 49.75 back to 48, down to 48. And then from that point, we're doing moderate increases every year, eventually low enough so that they're really just capturing the escalation, not new programs. And then you can see also at the end of fiscal year 26 there, I've noted that that would be the timing for a new rate study to see what we would need to continue to do moving forward. The other thing I would want to point out is that even though we have 15% on here every year, this is a projection right now, and as we've seen, things can change very quickly in solid waste. And so there would always be the option to hold back any of these increases if it was determined at any point that they weren't needed. So this is a snapshot of the fund balance predictions. So the lowest dip right here is the 1.1 million, so it's slightly lower than what was approved through the previous rate increase. And I would want to point out also that it looks like, it looks like these rate increases are too high, like at the end there, we're starting to get a lot of cash in the bank. So the important thing to note there is that the way that we manage the solid waste fund, the operating and vehicle expenses are all included in there. So when we look at these funds, we really want to look at two things. We want to look at how much we need for actual operating reserve, which is in the neighborhood of four or slightly over 4 million, and then the amount that we need also to cover capital expenses that will take place in the near future. So when we look at that fiscal year 29 number, we also looked ahead and saw that in fiscal year 30 and fiscal year 31 combined, we have over 10 million dollars in vehicles that are due for replacement. So that's what we're building toward as we get there. So this is actually showing an appropriate fund balance at the end of this period. Well, the end of the period would actually be 26, and this projects out to say, okay, if we continued, did another rate study and did smaller increases along the way, this is where it would put us. And here's that other option I promised. So if we charge for all bulky waste pickups, and we were to charge 25 and 15, the estimated impact is 244,000 dollars in the first year that we collect that. Now, it's important to point out that the impact is actually greater than that because on the rate schedule, I included escalation at the same level as the increases for other residential rates. So if the residential rates go up, so does the bulky waste cost. So by the end of the five-year period, that 25 would be 44, and the 15 would be 26 with a moderate increase each year. If we were to charge for the first, or for anything after the first pickup and provide that first pickup for no cost, the impact is only 17,000 dollars. And again, that would escalate. So by the end, we would be charging 54 for those extras and 35 for the HHW. So I think it's also important to point out that we've never charged for these before. So we did make some assumptions on how many people would actually move forward and take advantage of these programs should we start charging for them. So these amounts are not 100% participation rates, and that's why they seem like small amounts. But again, as it goes on throughout the years, these would escalate a little bit.
Can I just share that I was sharing with Dave Nugent that I had a washer that I replaced and got rid of the old one and took it out and then called to have, you know, someone pick it up. And I got bids from 100, 120, and 150 just for the washing machine pickup. And so it's, yeah, I would have rather paid 25.
Thank you for sharing that. That really does drive home the point that this is a costly program, and it costs money to have somebody show up at your house with heavy equipment to pick up items. And so this does seem like quite a bargain. So of course, plugging these into the rate model, I wanted to see how taking away that revenue, that anticipated revenue would affect our fund balance. And what you see here is actually an adjustment because just that change alone, without any other adjustments to the proposal, we would have a predicted fund balance at the end of fiscal year 24 of less than 500,000. And I didn't want to have anything that low in the rate model. And in fact, I'm not even terribly comfortable with these numbers. But what I did to mitigate that a little bit was add a little bit more of an increase in fiscal year 24. I increased it to 17% to bump that up just a little bit, have a little bit more in the support for the fund balance. And there's two benefits to this methodology. One is that the 17% would be two years from now, so we could reevaluate and hold back if it wasn't needed. So it's not a for-sure thing that we would need it. The other benefit to doing it this way is that putting it in fiscal year 24 corresponds with the sun setting of the SB 1383 surcharge. And so the customers would not actually experience another increase. In fact, here is the impact on a residential bill. So this would be with my proposal. The monthly, this is a typical monthly bill for a single-family home with a small garbage can, 65 gallon, and one recycle and one green waste. So we have the initial pretty large increase, but mostly due to the surcharge, and then a little bit lower surcharge, but also an increase, but it makes it a very small amount. But then when that surcharge goes away, the bill would actually drop by $1.75 a month. And then if we were to use the option where we did not charge for the first bulky waste or HHW pickup, we would still, we could still do that 17% increase and see a reduction of $1 instead of 1.75. And then, of course, the increases from there forward would be on a higher base, and so it would incrementally make the other increases higher as well. Okay, so then we always have to have this slide showing how we compare to everyone else, which is difficult because everyone has different programs, and so it's not always apples to apples. But it is a good, it's a good gauge to kind of see if we're in the ballpark of where others are. And you can see that right now, we're right among the middle. We're certainly not one of the lowest. And if we move forward with this proposal, as of January, we'll be on the higher end. But some of the things I wanted to point out about this was if we isolate just the six jurisdictions on this chart that are already doing food waste, the average is 46.37 a month, so we'd be right where others are. It's also interesting to note that there's quite a variation among those jurisdictions. You can see West SAC and Woodland are very low, but Napa and San Ramon are high. I don't know all of the impacts of what changes these rates and how they're established, but there could be things like proximity to facilities. And I know that in Yolo County, there is a facility that processes food waste right there, and so they wouldn't have as far to travel as maybe some others would. So there can be all kinds of impacts. Also, in our previous rate study, we did not have Stockton or San Ramon on there on our chart for comparison. And the reason that I added those two specifically is that when looking at SB 1383 information on cow recycle, those two communities are used as case studies for doing this program. And in both of those case studies, they noted how much they had to increase rates in order to implement the program. Stockton increased by 32.6%, and San Ramon increased by 29%. So that supports that these are lofty increases.
We could also presume that those who are not currently collecting green waste will also comply and have to do a rate increase to do that.
Yeah, that was going to be my comment. I think that all of those numbers are going to go up. They're not going to stay where they are. Everybody's subject to Senate bill.
Everybody is doing this, and this is a moving target. I know, I personally know at least five of them, Redding, Elk Grove, SAC County, City of SAC and Davis, either have proposals pending or they have scheduled increases that haven't occurred yet, and so they're not on my chart. We also know that Citrus Heights and Ranch of Cordova are currently in negotiations, so their rates have not been adjusted for 1383. So this is a moving target, and I can only speculate that at some point, where we are at and where everyone else is at, we'll adjust.
This is why my only recommendation, that probably is going to give a wrong impression to the residents. Maybe you can give the first blue bar on everybody, and in the second slide with the green waste and only display the cities which have already hiked, and we are in comparison with them, and you can put other cities in question mark, in progress or working. That way, people see it. Anybody is increasing, they are on par with us. It's not just Sacramento. Otherwise, me sitting here, to be honest with you, I'm looking at my neighbor in Citrus Heights and Ranch of Cordova, and they're so low. That's how I am going to read it, that picture. So maybe separating that before green waste and after green waste proposal, everybody has to go. As you nicely said before, implementing this program is costly. Not implementing is more costlier. That's what you said, every day, $10,000.
Yes.
So that's my recommendation, just by looking at that one. Two slides, one is before green and the other one is after green, cities not implemented, you can put question mark there, in progress.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Right. And Roseville and Rockland, usually people talk that they're not there.
They're probably pending.
I may not have been able to, actually, Rockland, I was not able to find their rates. And Roseville, Roseville I'll have to look into. I should be able to find theirs. But the other thing to consider about Roseville that's quite a bit different from us is that they have their partial owners in their facility, and they will not be adding more cans because they can sort out of, they have a mixed waste processing facility. So they sort through garbage. They don't sort through, okay, we've got green waste to sort through, we've got recyclables to sort through. They sort through it all.
Yeah.
So they're quite a bit different. And then also, I specifically chose not to include San Francisco in here, even though I do have their rate.
Thank you.
Just because they've been doing food waste for so long, but they're just not comparable to our service.
Don't care about them.
They have so many different. So I did that for you. So the next steps, where do we go from here? So tonight, what I'm hoping to get is some feedback and recommendations on what you would like to see on the final rate schedule. And then I'd like to come back with a resolution approving a Prop 218 notice in two weeks. notice in two weeks. And from there, we would mail out the notice to all customers, and that would be followed by a forty-five day comment period, or protest period, protest and comment, just like the last time. And during that period, we would host a community meeting. We would also do outreach in our newsletter and any other mediums that we can get the word out to the community about these new programs and the cost of them. And then we're, we would target a public hearing for December fourteenth. And the new rates, if there was not a majority protest, would become effective on January first of two thousand and twenty-two. So that concludes my presentation, and happy to discuss any questions.
I'm happy to see us move forward with the Prop two eighteen notification. We need to do that sooner rather than later. My comment, I don't have a problem necessarily with the SB thirteen surcharge. I think that's a good idea. With regard to the household, the, the two bulk pickups, I think we should charge for the first one.
Charge for all of them?
Well, my concern is if, if we, if you get the first one free, then you have to pay for the second one, I can tell you what everybody's going to do. They're going to just hoard all that stuff and wait till next year. And so nobody's going to pay for that second pickup. So I think, no, and if you look at Rosario's example of getting rid of a washing machine, what a three hundred dollar washing machine, cost you a hundred and fifty bucks to get rid of?
Yes.
You know, that's crazy. And, you know, I personally don't ever plan on visiting the dump. And I think most people don't want to do that. So, you know, I think it's extremely reasonable to be charging for that. In fact, I got a bunch of stuff. I would call tomorrow and say, come take it away.
And happy to pay twenty-five dollars.
Happily.
I agree.
I'll tip the driver.
Yeah.
They can't accept tips.
I know.
Please don't do that.
Okay, other?
I have a question. So, so just starting July first, the green waste will go to every week pickup?
Yes.
Does that mean the trash goes to every other week, or the gray can still is picked up every week?
It does not mean that trash goes to every other week. That would save us a-
It already is every other week.
No, trash. I'm talking about gray can.
Yeah. That would save us a ton of money. Unfortunately-
Literally.
So unfortunately, the California Code of Regulations does require us to pick up all garbage every week, can't accumulate for more than seven days. And the county is unlikely to flex on that because in discussions we've had with our regional groups, the, the hurdle that we just can't seem to find a way around is that there is pet waste and there are diapers in the trash.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Yeah. Please continue to pick up the trash weekly. I feel actually a little bit different about the household hazardous waste and the bulky waste. And I've said before, I'm a three-time-a-year bulky waste pickup girl, and my husband does take trips to the dump. I guess we just have a lot of junk. But I, I think what could potentially happen is somebody says, no, I'm not going to pay a hundred and thirty dollars to have my refrigerator picked up. I don't have a truck to take my stuff to the dump. I'm not going to pay the city of Folsom. So what am I going to do? I'm just going to stick it on the side of the road. I'm going to go to that office complex, and I'm going to stick the stuff in their dumpster. So-
But you have to have a truck to do that.
Well, people are resourceful, so.
There are people also, I think, who would accumulate it at their homes. And that's one of the things that this program is-
Yeah.
I can tell you that there's people driving to the restaurant in very expensive cars and throwing trash into our cardboard dumpster. Happens at least once a week. Yeah, I've called. I've called Dave and told him this is going on.
My guess is that gets exacerbated by this. So if it were just up to me, I would say, give everybody one free one per year. Make friends with your neighbors. You have one, they have one, then you have two per year, right? But, and then charge for the, beyond the first one. That, that would be my preference.
Okay. YK?
Is the goal, we are going to increase some more revenue through that, right? And-
That is the goal. It's, it's revenue driven and a little bit less subsidizing and more collecting from the actual users. The programs benefit all residents of Folsom because it does keep Folsom cleaner and safer in the case of the household hazardous waste. So there's benefits to everybody, and there's justification for everybody pitching in some. But this makes the users pitch in just a little bit more. So yes, it would be to generate the revenue.
Generate the revenue. Otherwise, the percentage is, is going to go up somewhere. Either you bring the funds from here or other way. But marketing with examples of how the, you know, one eight hundred junk is going to charge you, and the city is giving indirectly subsidy rate of twenty-five bucks, maybe. And I hear what Vice Mayor is also saying, exceptions, we have all the time. That's my personal statement. But on the same time, I'm putting my common sense also. Man, the city of Folsom is charging, increasing, and they took away my bulky waste also. Are they making, are they minting the money? I know, David is going, Dave is going to be retired by then, so.
Sorry, YK, he's, he's younger than you think.
I know. I call him to congratulate also. Anyway, the other thing is, the other thing is, I just want to make sure whether it is going to be, are we taking all of them one time and giving more rate for them? That's, that's, we have to think about it. And the second one, though, I love to keep that ten dollars all the way surcharge because-
Senator Lara surcharge.
I wholeheartedly support putting that on. I think it's a fantastic-
Right. It's, it's not us. At least it'll bring down our services and our cost or all those things.
Yeah. And I don't think, if we wanted to push the surcharge out through the entire five-year duration, I don't think we would have to keep it at ten dollars either. I think it could be lower.
Well, think about it, though. That ten dollars is not from us. It is from our senators and assembly members, not these city council members. We are doing a good job maintaining our, you know, funds here. So at least we've got to give perspective. I know, I'm so sorry, Folsom may be, you know, listening, but we have to do our things. How do we segregate? It is not Folsom is doing inefficient job and increasing the rates. It is somebody else is pushing on us, hence, we have to increase. That's my, my thing. It's not that five years all the way.
Yes.
Because we are not going to stop collecting the green waste. It's going to go all the way. That's, that's my views. That way, it is on someone else and see whether then they are running for as, Assembly Member Senator, probably they will ask the questions.
Mr. Mayor and, and Member of the City Council, if that were the council's direction to continue the surcharge, Public Works might have to redo the rate study because by law, we cannot charge more than the reasonable cost of providing the service. So some, there's, there's got to be some given, taken, and it's got to balance out.
Could we make the suggestion to collect the equivalent of the bulky waste pickup that was proposed in the surcharge? Modifying the surcharge in some way that would make up that two hundred thousand dollar delta?
I think you run into direct Prop two eighteen issues at that point. When you're calling it a SB thirteen eighty-three surcharge, it needs to be strictly those costs that you're recovering.
And that, and that would have to go to everybody evenly.
Right. And, and I, I, I think there, there is a, a path forward with the surcharge throughout the rate. What we would have to do is closely monitor what the startup costs are, recover all those, and then have that surcharge for the rest of the time to offset the increase in costs. So, you know, Murray had shown a slide up there, you know, what, what other costs we, we need to recover at this point, that would be captured in the percentage. Everything else we could capture with the surcharge.
And I don't think there's going to be any change in the public perception. They don't care how you put it on the bill. It's how much they have to pay at the end of the day. So we don't escape the, you know, the ten dollar thing by appearing to blame it on the state of California. That doesn't help anybody. So, and, and, and at the end of the day, you need to understand that, you know, that, that graph was what it was right now. We have been at the front edge of the wave on this whole thing. And all of those other cities that are shown as being less than us right now are going to be in the same situation.
I agree. That's why.
I agree. That's why I'm just suggesting, you know, break that graph into two folds.
I don't, I don't even think that helps us. You know, they, all of those jurisdictions are going to be raising their rates. We're doing it sooner than they are. And that's typical Folsom fashion. We are generally at the front edge of the curve.
Okay.
We do these things without, you know, finding, scrambling at the last minute to, to fix a problem.
If, if we have another presentation, though, there's no harm in having that as two graphs. I think that, that makes it-
It's before and after, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, certainly. I can separate those out into two graphs.
People are visual. When you see the picture, right away, they think Citrus Heights and Ranch is so low, we are so high and high. That, that, I'm just saying it, common sense. Anyway, I think that's my suggestion of, you know, going that surcharge, whatever it is possible, all the way to the end. I hear Councilwoman, you know, how point, but people do pay attention for their bills where the numbers are going as well. And always, if they are using excess, then obviously they try to reduce it. If something they don't have in the, in their control, then they can't.
So something I learned that was really interesting. I was on the fifty, and I saw a garbage truck. And I was like, what, what is your garbage truck doing down there? And then I realized that, that drive, that drive to the dump and gas. And I learned that. That was incredibly eye-opening when I did my rounding and just learned the times that one goes to the dump and the cost, just the gas alone. So living closer to the dump is going to be less expensive for a city that maybe lives farther away. I, I'm in the support of charging twenty-five dollars for every bulky waste. I, I, I think back, not even, I don't know, ten months, maybe a year ago, when I did a full cleanup of my yard, and I didn't want to wait for, getting the bulky waste pickup was like five weeks out. And it cost me four hundred and fifty dollars to rent a, I can't remember how big, fourteen-yard dumpster. And, and it was, I just were thinking, it's a lot of money. You know, I probably would have done several incremental twenty-five dollars pickups. I think that is a very reasonable amount. I think it keeps the cost to the city and residents. I think it's a fair request. It's reasonable. That's, that's my two cents.
You may still have a long wait.
Yeah.
But if we are charging, people may be a little bit more conservative and save up a little more before they use their pickups. And so theoretically, it may help with that demand and get the pickups just a little bit sooner. But we really can't say until we do it. The other thing I would throw out there is that if we did start charging for this, I believe, and maybe Steve can provide input, I don't believe there'd be anything that would prevent us from lowering that or holding it back in the future if it was an approved fee. Is that correct?
Yeah.
There's nothing wrong with reversing it if we suddenly have a lot of sofas on the side of the road.
Yeah, that's true. Prop two eighteen does not require you to notice people to reduce fees, only increasing them.
Yeah.
Very good. I, I guess I will just say thank you to the staff because I know this has been a tremendous heavy lift into our consultant that helped us with the rate study. Thank you. And I would like to, having been a member of the Utility Commission once upon a time, thank you, thank the members of the Utility Commission because it is the definition of most thankless assignment that we can give any commission member because they invariably have to deal with something like this, and they never, ever have an audience. So nobody's watching. I think my record of being the only audience member at a Utility Commission meeting is still secure because I went one time after I was no longer on the commission.
From what I've observed, that's true.
Yeah. So, so do you need a motion to be able to go back and bring this to us on the twenty-seventh? Or are we simply accepting this presentation?
Just clear direction to staff as to what to bring back to the council?
Okay. I think, I think the collective opinion was that the presentation, the rate study, as you presented it, is fine with the inclusion of the, you know, with the exception of the Vice Mayor, the, the inclusion of the bulky waste charges was acceptable overall.
And it is coming back for approval again, second reading, or?
It'll, it'll actually come to us for the first time next, next city council meeting.
We have, we have to approve the Prop two eighteen notification.
This was just to get-
We have to start, we have to approve the starting of the process to do public communication.
That will start a whole public outreach, a very robust effort.
And this approval is giving them to go to public? Or, I know?
No.
What we're doing tonight is just telling them that we're okay with the structure of what they've come up with. Bring it back to us as something that we can approve to start the two eighteen process.
Got it. Okay. Thank you for clarifying. My, my only thing is, right, when we are going to the public, they have to hear that loud and clear. The penalties behind this is huge. It is not a small number. Those, that's why I was just asking that clarifying question.
Absolutely. It's a really good question. And yes, we do seek to explain ourselves because we don't want to come across like we're just increasing rates because we feel like it. You know, there is, there, we are, as you correctly said, we're, you know, we're being pushed, you know?
Yeah. And then I do have one frivolous question, I think, for Mr. Nugent. We talked at some length at one point about how to collect kitchen kind of scraps in a way that, you know, can go out into a trash can on a hot day?
Yes.
Or a hot week. The idea here is that those are to be separated into their own smaller bag and then put into the green waste can. Is that the strategy?
That's the strategy. And that's part of the, the startup cost, I believe Murray rolled in there, would be to provide the customers a small can with bags that are appropriate for that use that would then be placed in the green waste.
When you say small can, you're talking about something to keep outside or something to keep inside?
Your choice. I think the intent is like a countertop can for food scraps.
Gotcha. Okay.
I like to keep my meat scraps on the countertop. I don't know about you.
I was just going to say, I think for all of you who were parents in the nineties, there's probably an opportunity for somebody to reinvent the diaper genie for kitchen scraps.
There, there will be no meat bag on my counter.
Exactly. Can you imagine though, Jim in your hand?
Wait, you mean, you guys didn't use the milk cart, milk cartons?
No.
We did in my house.
You're going to have to explain that to me sometime.
Milk cartons.
And Eileen doesn't, isn't going to have a meat bag on her counter because she's vegetarian.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is that, you, under, our direction is adequate?
Yes.
Okay, fantastic.
I believe so, yes. And I'll include a picture of one of those little kitchen top containers in the next presentation.
Very good. Okay.
Last eat food genie.
The George Foreman food genie. Okay, City Manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. We've launched a new and improved electronic bill payment service for our utility customers. And this online portal is operated by Invoice Cloud. It makes it easier for customers to view and pay their bills with an expanded online bill payment portal. It's very important to know that all current auto pay and bank draft customers must re-enroll in the new online payment portal. I myself just, you know, re-enrolled myself this afternoon. So I urge you all to do that. And you can find out more at folsom.ca.us/newbillpay. Beginning on Monday, July nineteenth, a section of White Rock Road will be temporarily closed for graining, drainage, and paving of the Capital Southeast Connector Project. White Rock Road will be detoured from Placerville Road to Alder Creek Parkway to East Bidwell in both directions. The City of Folsom is accepting proposals for two city-owned, for lease of two city-owned buildings. Proposals for nine oh five Leadustorf Street in Folsom's Historic District are due by three P M. on August thirtieth. And proposals for short or long-term lease of four oh five Natoma Station Drive are due by three P M. on August thirty-first. And you can find out more details at folsom.ca.us/rfp or speak with Ms. Pajoni. I'm sure she'd be delighted to chat with you. And the senior center lounge is open from nine to three, Monday through Wednesdays, long-awaited opening, reopening of those doors. Seniors age fifty-five plus are invited to drop in and enjoy books, board games, and friendly conversation. And perhaps Mr. Nugent will join them in his retirement. And then at the Tuesday, July twenty-seventh meeting, the Folsom City Council will again consider a resolution of intent that would start the process to transition the city from at-large elections to by-district elections, a move that would change how Folsom residents elect their city council members. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Very good. Any council reports? Mr. Chalantela?
Sir, thank you. And I know last time, Eileen helped us to meet all the directors and departments. Now I'm taking one more step further. When I get an opportunity to meet the staff in one go, I am taking those opportunities. And I think yesterday, Chief Hellman, they invited me for one of their training program, which is fifty percent of our police department is in one room. That's happy to see everyone besides the, you know, commanders and the chief. And likewise, I did for the Water Resource Department, and I requested for our other departments as well, including the fire and Public Works and all those. So I just want to make that, you know, it's important for me to go and-
So I just want to make that, you know, it's important for me to go and meet our staff who are doing those, you know, five hundred people hard work out there. And the other one is a lighting and landscape district, I know we just got some information. I read those five contracts which we have already in place, trying to understand, you know, what exactly the vendors has to do and what things we can educate our residents so that they can make the vendors accountable for the things they have signed up in the contracts. It's especially lighting and landscaping across the town. So that's important, I felt it, I'm going through it. And I'm a little bit proactive to bring the remaining unfilled lighting and landscaping representatives from all the districts. So I found two so far, you know, to fill those vacancies. And the last one is water conservation, you know, I, I, I had a chat with Elaine and see anything, any programs out there, either through state or feds or any nonprofits, who can give us some rebates to buy the devices like a flume, which costs about a hundred and fifty dollars. So hopefully we will get, you know, some sooner. If none of them are giving anything, at least probably I can request our council to see whether we can be a little bit generous to give some rebates on that one. So with that, good evening and thank you.
Rosario?
Yeah, I have, I, I just want to give a really big shout out to the Greater Folsom Partnership for an outstanding rodeo. I have been on mutton busting for four years now and this particular one, you can tell that people were just excited to get out. It was great, all three days were fantastic, the energy was fun. Congratulations to Adam and Megan who got engaged on the third night. I also want to share a little bit about the Historic District Parking Solution Work Group. This is a work group that came together from just a lot of frustration of residents and businesses owners in the Historic District. And so yesterday, we had an opportunity to hear from Streetline, which is an organization, which is a parking management system. And there are, it was so great to see technology being used to the, for the benefit of residents and businesses and something that could potentially be a net revenue for the city. I, I would love for you guys just to hear what it is that's out there that could be one of, that could be a solution to a problem, from what I hear, a twenty-year-old problem. Excuse me, I also want to give a big congratulations to Michelle Setzer, who is U S Olympics rowing. She was a class of two thousand and four, and so it's exciting to see somebody from Folsom out there. Also, Elaine, happy birthday, this is a great month, have a birthday. And also, it's so great to see your smiles and be without masks. It's really exciting for us to be getting back to normal from this COVID pandemic, that's it.
Very good, thank you.
Ditto what Rosario said about the rodeo, that was great to see that the, the rodeo sold out all three nights. It wasn't as amazingly hot as it could have been. So that was, it was just a, a really, really great event. I've been doing mutton busting, I don't know, twenty-three, twenty-four years, so it was just, I'm, you know, missing the rodeo last year was a really, really strange thing. So I'm just glad that everything was pretty much back to normal. Although I will comment that when I was on my way home, and I typically leave the rodeo early, I don't stay for the fireworks, I was shocked, absolutely shocked, driving from basically, I was parked here in the City Hall parking lot, after paying my ten dollars, of course. Between here and my house, which is just a little bit past the water treatment plant, I could not believe the number of people that had fireworks in the middle of the street and the number of illegal fireworks that I could see being shot from my back deck. I am shocked and I may go on a little tirade next year. I've, you know, all of my friends know and every nonprofit that has ever called me to ask me to work at a fireworks booth, I've said no because I don't support them, I know they're fundraisers, there's other ways to raise money for these organizations. This was the worst year that I have ever seen in terms of people that could have been hit by cars because they were in the middle of the street doing legal or illegal fireworks. And I've never seen that many illegal fireworks from my house, not even close. So I'm, I'm all for banning them entirely, I don't know how many fires we had, but I was shocked and frightened, frankly. I got a whole bunch of oak trees around my house, I, you know, we need to, we need to think twice about this next year. So happy that we're all here in the same room, that we're all sitting at the big table for the first time in a long time. The, all of the, the driving problems persist, that people are driving too fast and running stop signs and red lights and speeding and please stop it, pretend your mother's driving behind you. With that, I will say goodnight.
Thank you, Sarah?
No report.
Okay, I just have a couple of really quick things. I also had, like always, a blast at the rodeo, I really, really enjoyed it. On the last night of the, if it's any consolation, on the last night of the rodeo, I left and went up to the hill over by the lake and watched the fireworks from there. And there were, by comparison to Folsom, it looked like the blitz was happening in Roseville, which I could see off in the distance. So I was seriously concerned that there was actually bombing runs happening over there, so we were, we were better than that. The, I had, you know, several of us had the opportunity to go to a promotion ceremony and to welcome some new firefighters to our fire department almost two weeks ago now. Just wanted to, you know, say once again, welcome to those guys that have joined the fire service here in Folsom. We're very proud of them and of our fire service, and congratulations to those that got new promotions. And then I was invited to come to the dedication of a plaque at the Folsom Powerhouse, which is the little electric generating building from days gone by that's down by, down by the lake in the Historic District. And I learned something really interesting that I did not know about Folsom. The, the Institute of Electrical Engineering recognized with a beautiful plaque on a rock out there that the powerhouse that's here in Folsom was the very first instance of long-distance transmission of three-phase sixty hertz power, which is what we use today. And that started exactly one hundred and twenty-six years ago today, from that powerhouse down to our state Capitol building. So the original streetcars in Capitol. Yeah, I didn't know until today, otherwise I would have ordered a cake. Anyway, so we have yet another example of Folsom being a technology leader in the world, how about that? So with that, I will say goodnight and we are adjourned at eight fifty-two.